Uh, everyone get a chance to read last month's minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to accept?
Motion we accept last month's minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
New business, visitors forum. Uh, Aubrey, or Aubrey, gee my goodness, Mara had told me January, February, about the visitors, that we did not have to allow them to like publicly speak, like say Mr. Green wanted to speak tonight. If he wasn't on, we can make it where they have to be on the agenda.
Well, that's part of the visitor forum.
Right.
That's part on that side of it.
But they should-
That's what he's saying is we can change it to where they can't just freely stand up and speak, they have to call me and actually be put on the agenda to speak.
That's the way she talked, that was-
You can't regulate that way, plus with July one with the new uh decorum stuff in there too, what would be happening?
Right, and she said that that was a, a lot of towns do it that way.
And I know from when I first started, I was told that there's some councils that the way it's set up, they're back is to the audience and the only one they face is who's on the agenda and speaking to them.
I'll run that by me again.
The way that, like, the way ours is set up, it'd be opposite, the audience would be like behind you and the only one in front of you is the one that's on the agenda addressing the council.
So where's the paperwork as far as the state even what we're allowed to do?
Oh, she just, I've never seen a paperwork on it, she just said-
It's in the state statute. I know it's a real thing, I know other places that do it, I've been pulled by a couple of ones that trained me.
I'd like to see it, exactly, I, I trust you guys as far as saying that it is, but I would like to see it.
And just remember July one, that decorum thing will be in place where you guys can I'm sure we'll sit down and thoroughly go through how we should handle that, you know, for outbursts and stuff like that. And it gives them, you know, how it has to be posted and all that kind of stuff, so that's coming down the pipe too, so.
So can I get a motion to table the visitor forum?
Make a motion to table visitor forum.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Why isn't our attorney here?
She may be around like-
I don't know, but she needed to be here tonight?
I know that was part of the thing, that they, she could be here for meetings and if she couldn't, she would make sure someone was. That's what she said.
Probably is a big teacher.
Uh, the amended salary ordinance, that's you, Trina, right?
Yes, I emailed that to everybody, the only thing I changed was the pay for the deputy clerk since I now have one again.
Can I make a motion-
That's the only thing I changed on it from last-
Make a motion to accept the amended salary ordinance?
I'll make a motion to accept the amended salary order.
Second?
Second, Dan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the resolution, those you also?
Yeah, that is for the additional appropriation for um, the attorney. When we hired her, remember I told you guys I didn't put very much in there?
Right.
When I had to cut, cause we didn't have one yet?
Yep.
And then I zeroed out my deputy clerk wages when I did the budget, so I had to put some money in there. So this is the additional appropriations, I'm putting three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in personal services, which is the deputy clerk's wages and I'm adding five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to the attorney fees, which is under other services and charges. So I just need this voted on, so I can send it to the DGLF and see if we get approved.
Make a motion for the resolution.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The SEFA policy, is that you also?
That is, I emailed it to you guys, I really don't completely understand in it, understand it. I just know that my last audit, I am required to have one in place for um federal grant monies. So that's what it's for.
I printed all this about what you want me to ask.
Yeah, but I didn't completely read it, Aubrey just pulled from the state and put it together by examples she could find and, I mean, not Aubrey, but Mara.
So you're doing it too?
Yeah, um-
You started.
So she could put one together because I'm gonna be getting audited again sometime this year, so we need to have it in place before they come back.
I make a motion, we accept the, or, I need a motion. Yeah, I need a motion to accept the SEFA policy.
I'll make a motion to accept the, or, yeah, to accept the SEFA policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, then take that off of that in front of the city garage one. Just mark that. Uh, update on the paving project, I have not heard from Lou or, no, it wasn't Lou that was doing it. Johnson? Sent to me?
I think so.
Yeah, I haven't heard from him and I know that the grant, the application is due July first, is last I knew about it, so.
We were, I, we, I was just curious to know what was, what's on it, cause it hasn't actually been discussed openly or publicly, I have no idea what streets are on there, somebody calls and asks me, I have no idea.
I will call him, try and get ahold of him tomorrow, I'll be over that way, so.
Cause I haven't heard from him since I told him that, that what they asked for was way too high and I haven't heard nothing about it since.
Yeah. I will make that phone call. Uh, update on corrections for projects.
Well, that part of it would be as far as I know you were supposed to talk to Lou about the stuff that wasn't done on the water project that we had to show up.
Yeah, I haven't talked to him either.
He was gonna look into as far as on that.
I'll just take myself to remind you right now.
And then also, that would be the, I know they're going, guys going around, I think that's with the stormwater.
Yeah, I've seen a guy, I don't know what he's doing there.
Yeah, I don't know what the-
Is it a white van?
Yeah.
I think he's a um-
He's a surveyor.
A surveyor for the state, I guess with the-
But I think it has to do with the storm that was put in the way I, I was told.
I'll, I've probably seen him more also, I'll talk to him.
Yeah. Cause I know the second year end of it's coming up, so any corrections that need to be done, need to be done prior to the-
I don't know if any of you guys have been brought up to speed, but there was a farmer to the north of town, a resident that kinda rerouted about fifty acres of water and it made a its own trench, I should, would call it, over the past five or six years through the field and coming right behind Mr. Showwater's old place. And I mean, we, I know we haven't had rain since that's been repaired or taken care of, so we'll see how that plays out. But I do know that IDIM has been contacted about that whole situation up there, which has nothing to do with us.
It's happened at least twice that I can think of in the last two years probably.
Yeah.
And even affects some of the houses on the north end where I mow at, the water's coming in on the backside of their properties as well.
And hopefully the, not only with our new storm sewer that goes through there, through Showwater's old place and then the way they-
There's a lot of water coming in.
Right, and it comes clear across that field just on the north end of the garage there.
Like a stream.
Mm-hmm. So, I mean, that's, that's where that's at, I know that it's been, the gentleman owns the field, has done a lot of work up there in the past month. So they seem to think that that was the root of all of our pro, a lot of our problems, so we'll see, hopefully. Um, the no parking behind the fire station, that's actually the parking ordinance that Trina emailed us. And there's, Kerry's done pointed out a couple places that we need to have removed off of it.
Yeah, cause she said that's just a draft to be discussed, it won't be voted on until next month.
Right, so which ones you, did you point out to Kerry?
Number five where it was in front of the field, where I guess where we used to park the police car.
Right, number five needs to be taken off of it, did you bring one up, Trina?
In front of city garage is that where?
On Walnut.
Yeah, in front of the garage on Walnut.
Cause who'd you say owned it?
We don't even, we don't, we don't, yeah, it's an Amish guy that owns it now. That one old man passed away.
Cause I think it was put there when they were parking the police car and-
Yeah, that was-
Way before me, before Kanye even-
My dad was a marshal there, they used to-
I was gonna say, and it was fire station before this was built.
I think it might have still been ours when that first started.
Yeah, we got right after that, then you cleared everything out of it.
Yeah.
Um, and then number ten, which is under the same section, the parking restriction on US twenty seven, uh, we can't regulate parking along state highways, that's, that's state, that has to do that. And now we can petition them to do that and they can come in and do their little stuff that they gotta do and say, yeah, you're paying. But we can't, we can't reg-
I, I think there was another one in there about the west side of twenty seven.
Uh, I think that's just- So what about B?
That was number nine.
I think that's just referring on the west side of twenty seven as far as-
Right, but I mean, it's, there was that one that said something about-
B says steady limits north of park entrance on east side of US twenty seven.
Oh, I know, I just couldn't remember that one, you're right.
Yeah, that-
Parking limited for four hours, cross that out too?
Yeah, cause we, we can't regulate on the state highway. It's gotta be covered under state statute from the state, the state highway has to do that.
I think three and four. No. Four?
No, that's actually talking about South Street.
South, oh, huh?
That's where I took it.
Huh?
Where I took it.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't see, I looked right over from-
Up two, I think that's, that's the way I read it, is up two.
Right.
The only thing I would-
Um-
As far as number six, so as far as the, within thirty feet of every intersection. So is that from the center of the intersection or from the edge of it? Because I mean, they're on Green Street, if you do that in front of my house, I will have no parking.
That's why, that's why we need to adjust-
That's most your streets.
And I think, yeah.
That's why, that's why I suggest we do an ordinance, cause ordinance can't supersede state statute, but we can lessen.
I was gonna say, didn't it say somewhere in here that we could-
Fifteen or ten feet or something like that.
We could adjust that.
So now as far as like-
You can't do more than the state, but you can do less.
Right.
Right, but as far as so the parking out front on that side of it, so you're going from where was I, I just lost it. There it is, so three oh seven West Main.
Is that your red house?
No, it's uh-
That's across the street.
That's across the street, yeah.
Yeah, so-
So it's saying on the south side of Main Street.
There is no parking at all, so you're wiping out all of that side.
I, and I don't think we should do that.
No, I, you know, like says the fire hydrant thing, you know, if we did the fire hydrant, there'd be no parking.
Well, the fire hydrant is what fifteen feet, that leaves a-
Is that from the center or radius?
Radius.
Radius. But I think it's more, they're more marked each, like, each way.
So basically it'd be like seven feet or seven and a half feet one way, seven and a half feet one way.
Probably.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, okay. I've been doing this job a long time and, you know, parking, that's been one of my big things, but um-
So we need to change the thirty feet, is that where you're talking about?
The thirty feet setback?
Yeah, number six, so what do you wanna change it to?
Well, let me-
Or you wanna look into it first?
Let me, let me-
I drive around and take a look and see on the intersection and stuff like that.
I drive around, look on the intersections and stuff like that.
Stuff like that, because like I said, I mean, I understand as far as to where people are able to make the corners and stuff like that, but if you go thirty feet from Pearl Street, if you take thirty feet that way, you can bring the thirty feet back from uh Mill Street.
Yep, no parking.
There's no parking there.
Well, just put some gravel on it, it's like a last moment.
Hey, that's one of those.
I'll, let me uh, if I can snag Kyle or David or Green Walker or something and have both, just give us-
Well, that would be Kyle, as far as on the street.
I'll just snag Kyle one day and we'll drive around and we'll make some notes.
Just and-
Maybe we need to make all the streets just parking on one side.
Yeah.
Yeah, listen to the person talk that doesn't have to park on the street.
We don't have to, that's right.
Yeah. Free parking back there by Trina's.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, it ain't like anybody can say anything.
There are shovel service everywhere?
But let me, let me hold up Kyle alone and maybe meet him, sit down, take an hour or two and then we can just drive around and look at some of the intersections and make some notes. And address some things, and I, I think there's some things that we uh, like somebody's corner, I think, the way I read it, I may be wrong. Some have to be curbed to be able to make them enforceable for no parking too, I think. I'm still reading, so I haven't got an answer on that yet. So, um, cause the way I read it through the state that regulates all the paints and it has to be curbed. That's the way I, that's the way I read it. I could be interpreting it wrong and there may be something in there where they say towns can do whatever. But that's just, just, I'll take it on it, we can get, get that done off of everything else we're doing right now, so.
If it's limited to no parking, I mean, where there's a curb, we can actually paint it, that ain't gonna happen. We don't have, we don't have-
Not very many.
We don't have very many streets curbed and that's so their doors are not gonna accompany them.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, I gotta see if, just sometimes statute, state statute allow towns to regulate things within their town a little bit than what-
Like change paint at the street where there wasn't no curb.
Yeah, and I, I just gotta find out and I caught, gotta call into gosh dang, I can't remember his name, it's from, from the state and he hasn't called me back. And it was about last meeting when I did that, so.
Probably count on one hand how many streets I've covered.
Let's just-
And that's because they just got put in.
Yeah, that's, I mean, has anybody seen anything else on that?
No, other than the, the feet, yeah, so.
In front of all fire hydrants and fire lanes, as well as entrances and exits from fire stations. Uh, that's which I mean, in front of the drives would be, I think Wes was saying would be fine.
Right.
But the state's actually says what, thirty feet from, thirty feet from the corner, from the edge of the drives.
Thirty feet. Yeah, the edge of each one, which you wouldn't have any parking here.
Which would kill- Right.
And parks, you would hardly have anything on that.
Right.
I think in front of it would be just fine.
Well, that's the way it was out front.
Yeah.
Before they done the water project.
They took it apart and forgot to bring it back, so.
So you're gonna give notice to all these people?
These have to be-
You have to.
Those have to be posted for thirty days.
Yeah.
So that's why you need to get whatever needs to be changed to her, so she can revise it and I can post it.
Once you guys vote on it and then it's properly marked and then I can, you know, I gotta get a raise period for everybody to get used to basically what it is.
Right, but I mean, before this is even voted on, it's gotta be posted for thirty days.
Yeah, it's gotta be noted.
Uh, she needs to change the vice president thing on there, I see.
I, I already fixed it before I printed it off.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't realize it till after I printed it, so I had to go back and fix the last page and reprint it. I did that, she did it on the SEFA policy too.
Got you. Anything else on that? Moving on. Uh, department reports, we'll start with the ones on top here, the police department. We've got two cases drawn, three active, seventeen for the year. Uh, they, both canines participated in the Sierra Legacy K nine trials last Saturday before, Memorial Day weekend.
Had a good showing.
Excellent showing. Um, prepping for field day training. Getting main day training set up. Um, needing some practice ammo.
I've got
Go ahead.
Three, two of the three on there, the other one hasn't called me back yet, but they're probably gonna be right along the same lines as what Trigger is. Last time I bought ammo, I think Mike, was it about like twenty-five hundred grams to practice?
I don't know.
And it's just now, it's just now, I'm down to like two, three boxes. So that's why I went with two thousand this time, that'll last me probably two years, so. But um, field seems to be the better of the ones, uh, but-
I think you bought down there quite a few times anyway.
I think Aaron's bought one of these here.
Yeah, they've always given us-
He, he gives, he always gives us a good deal.
Yeah.
I mean, the only thing is I have to go down and pick it up, I'm not gonna pay the seventy dollar shipping for me to drive an hour to pick it out.
It's Conneville, it's-
At Rushville.
Rushville, right, Rushville, that's right.
So, and I've got like seventeen hundred in there and the funds that it comes out of, so I think.
Something like that, I know you asked me a couple weeks ago and I can't remember, but-
Yeah, I mean, like, you don't spend anything out of this.
And that's something that you don't actually have to vote on, cause he has to have it to do, it's not just like chemicals for utility.
Told you.
Oh.
Yeah, told you.
Okay, so I'll probably give a little bit. And just wait on the stuff from the-
Okay, uh, on the street department, street slash park, I guess you wanna call? Um, Kyle, the park needs new mulch and landscape fabric for the playground, which has been pretty thin for several years. Uh, the mulch is three hundred and thirty dollars and forty cents for ten ton delivered. Um, a hundred and nine dollars and ninety-eight cents for the, the fabric that goes underneath. Um, wanting to repaint the inside of park bathrooms. Um, bathroom paint is around two hundred dollars and that would do both bathrooms. Uh, working on cleaning up streets, got new painting and we'll start painting drains in curbs soon, which I think they done some today.
Yeah, I called them.
Yeah.
There's been a few complaints on them not being done and they got out and they cleaned over there between Harley, no Walnut, Walnut and twenty seven, that section had been done, it'd been sitting there like that and then couple people on uh Mill Street are complaining about the grass growing in the street. So.
Speaking of grass growing, how much more, longer do we wait for the guy up there next to Edgar's old place?
That's a head house now and I can't find the paper they sent me for that.
I put a notice in there, the notice is gone, so somebody has been there.
Okay.
And I was going to-
I just seen that the other, yesterday or today.
I was more dressed up this week, usually what I do is I give them those, give them a couple days. Then I'll go back, I'll find, I'll find out, I guess I'm gonna call the counter on that Sunday.
Yeah, for that, that one's-
I just happened to see it and that's-
I, I, there was a notice I put in there last week. Uh, last- Thursday, I think it was. And it's gone, so somebody's been there.
Okay. Um, well, how do we feel about the mulch and the, the fabrics for, on the playground?
I think as far as on the whole of it, I mean, as long as he has the funds for the park.
Yeah.
I think it needs to be cleaned up, taken care of on that side of it, the only thing as far as down the park they went through and they sprayed everything on that side of it and I'd like to see them stop spraying and use the weed eater. The grass looks good and all of a sudden you see where they sprayed. As far as the chemicals go, some people
Right.
You know, don't like the chemicals as far as with the kids and stuff like that, so I'd much rather see them using the weed eater instead of spraying chemicals.
I already told, he's taught, he talked to me about the mulch and the fabric and I told him that it needs to be done. I don't ever go in the bathrooms, so I don't know about the paint, but I definitely, I definitely get the mulch and the fabric done.
Right, and I-
Now and then see how the account looks, cause that one is utilities are paid out of it, so I can't. I just have to make a judgment call.
Right, well, and I mean, I don't think the bathroom's been painted though, but I can remember.
I've gotten a few complaints about bathrooms.
Few years ago, I mean, it's been a few years.
About how bad the walls and the floors look.
Yeah.
So, can I get a motion to do the mulch and the fabric for the playground?
I'll make a motion to get the mulch and the fabric purchased.
Is that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then Trina, will you will let him know on the paint for the bathroom?
Yeah, um, after I get the-
I mean, are we all okay with-
After I deduct the mulch and the fabric, I'll do some figuring and then we can put it on the uh, thing for next month.
Well, it'd be under, it'd be under two hundred dollars.
I mean, it's right there, I mean, could we, if there's money, does everybody okay with them going ahead and doing that?
I just go ahead and just do it.
As long as we have the funds, I-
We'll just include the mulch, fabric and paint all together, so great motion, uh, pay seconded and all was in favor. Okay.
Um, all three of the guys are, at least Walker and Kyle and then David, been in the past couple days, I think. Down the four oh two Iml working on a septic and there's a tree, they say that's, that's going into the, the septic. Um, the-
Yeah.
Cause we know you charge it round. Geez, boys.
See, the only one I have is for the one that we didn't have all of last month.
The pressure one.
What's that?
They pressure washed some of the characters here.
Oh, I don't know.
The blue ones that are sitting.
I'm like telling you, if you're, that's what good dog will squeeze.
Oh no, these, those are the old ones that were sitting outside.
Um, on the the four oh two Iml Street, there's a, a large tree, oh, they say extra large tree stump removal. At ground level, remove all. Uh, they want twenty-seven hundred and thirty dollars, which I mean we only got the one, but I think that's who we've been using, the tree amigos.
Yeah, nobody else uses it.
Right, and there's a note on here that asked if, since it, to deal with trying to eliminate problem with the septics, can we split that?
I'm prob, I would say I should be able to charge it all to sewer since it, the reason the tree needs removed is because of the septic tanks, not for any other reason.
I would say so too.
Yeah, I, I mean, that, that's the question that's on here, so.
Yeah, that, and if I'm asked about it, that will be my justification and I guess they can tell me if I did it wrong, then I did it wrong and I'm gonna have to fix it, but that's my thinking on it.
Well, and that was kind of what, when I talked to David earlier today, I was like, I don't know about splitting it, but I'm like you, it has to do, it's causing problems with the sewer, so.
And I have this one from last month that they voted on and I didn't have the full quote for that tree that needs removed on um North Walnut.
Three ten?
Eric Nolan's old house, it's in the street right away, yeah.
Eighteen hundred and fifty dollars?
Yeah, I only had part of it last month and we voted on it and I didn't have the full at quote, so we got a revote on it.
Is that for causing septic problems also, or?
No, that one is just, it's, it's gonna fall down.
Okay, it's on the north end, right?
Yeah, Eric Nolan's old house, I don't have that, yeah, yeah.
Hey, if, one thing as far as if we're taking trees down on that side of it, I'd like to see that we at least put one or two back or something like that every time.
Try and, yeah, I agree.
You know, cause I mean, that's, I went up there and looked at it, I mean, realistically, they saw all the roots out of it, so that's taken thirty years for it to get where it's at, so it could be another thirty years before it happens again, but you know, if we do-
Right, we just need to be careful on what we plant because of all the, I think what they planted last time they did it was those silver maples and they're the ones that's causing all the problems.
Well, it, all of it is closed when they are as far as on that. Right, that was the second part, that's what we voted on.
Got you. I got you.
So if we could possibly look into some trees as far as that side, just to try and get some of them replanted, I think that would be a a good step in the direction.
Yep.
So the one that, for, well, three ten North Walnut, that'll come out of the CCI trees and sidewalks. And then the other one will come, I'll use sewer for.
The one of them on Walnut is twenty-three thirty is what Laurie's mattress got here.
Oh boy, here we go.
I didn't say that. Michael said it, I'll win.
What meeting was it that we were sitting like this? Yeah.
And then, um-
So just ask a motion for tree removal, you don't need to separate them out.
I need a motion. Yeah. Well, I got one more here for stump grinding at four oh two and four oh four Ross, which is where they took down a great big-
The one that fell on the street, that it took, or, or that was.
On Ross, it's where.
Where fries used.
Where fries used.
I thought they already ground that, didn't they?
No, it's still there, I know that yard too.
But I thought we.
That was when Chase was here and he made a list of the stuffs that needed.
No, they just took that tree down.
Oh, you mean that, you thought they did it when they took it down?
I thought we had approved, I don't know.
Regardless of the one at four.
Needs to be ground.
Right, there's one at four oh two and four oh four Ross Street, it's nine hundred and twelve dollars for both of them.
So, but I'll use what I have in the CCI and if there's any more that needs paid, I'll use it. Except for the one that's for the septic tanks, I'll use sewer for it.
Why are they gonna grind two of them for five hundred and seven dollars and charge four hundred and eight for the other?
Two of them, four eighty a piece is nine sixty.
Oh.
There's that math.
I was looking at, I, where's the ones I added together? Oh, that one, that's what I was.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to get the two stumps ground for nine hundred and one.
We're just gonna.
Make a motion to accept tree amigos, all of tree amigos.
Make a motion for tree amigos to get everything taken care of.
Second.
Second ten.
All favor.
Aye.
Sewer report, sewer report, uh, they discharged it, discharged Monday, May sixth to the, Saturday, the eleventh. And May twenty-eighth to May thirty-first for one point six million gallons. Uh, lagoon chemicals is ordered and received three hundred gallons of each, lagoons have been mowed weekly, remove most of the weeds around the ponds. Uh, limb pile removed from the lagoons. Uh, Rob Jefferson to have quote by Friday, six, seven for lagoon solar power. Went to IDAM and ND to review their test, came back with some pretty good study guides. Uh, met with Eric from Alliance to go over different ways to approach smoother discharges. Vow work done at lagoons to help circulate through each pond more efficiently. Uh, DNR flood, floodplain certification course pushed back to June, will attend with Kyle to both be certified. Uh, then he's got the four oh two Imel Street and four oh two Ross Street. Uh, the septic lids to be ordered from Berlin, they work with the risers we have already, already have. Builder supply lids will not work, quote is available.
That's something else I told him they didn't need, but, cause we have to have them.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think they already have like eight or ten of them that they need to replace on that side of it.
Right.
As far as our ordinance goes, I think that we need to look at that cost because if someone.
I don't know that that is actually in ordinance, it's just a, a invoice, a plain. Template of an invoice that I fill in, name and address and everything, and then when the. I've already changed the lid price once, cause it went up while Ron was still here.
Yeah.
But I don't know if there's actually dollar amounts in the ordinance, I think it just says that if. There's just homeowner damages that they're responsible for replacing it.
Oh, okay. Where's this place, where's this Berlin outlet, oh Minnesota, I was gonna say, a hundred and twenty dollars for shipping?
Yeah.
But, but they also need to make sure that the lid actually needs replaced, cause like talking to Ron. David replaced one, cause there was, he said there was a hole in, in it, but there's stuff. That lid goes on the riser, so there's stuff under that that would stop stuff from falling in, or just cause there's a small hole in the top of the lid, doesn't mean you need to replace it.
Right. So they need to, they don't need to vote on that, correct? Okay. Um, everybody's got a copy of their, their upcoming inlet riser deal, septic digs. And I mean, I've asked all of them and I'm not trying to be negative about it, but I just kinda asked them, I was like, where's all these coming from? And clearly nobody in the past has really got down and checked them like these guys are, so that's a good thing, I guess. Um.
Ross Street's the big winner.
It is, there's a lot of.
I mean, you gotta think about how many years it's been since those septic were put in the ground, but it was just Ron, ninety-five.
Was it ninety-five?
Yeah.
Uh. Uh, things needed to discuss devoted, uh, they were.
So they're on that, on Green Street, the two oh three, since that's over there at SoCo's place. They're gonna pull that and cap that one, cause it hasn't been kept yet.
That's the, the vacant lot.
Yeah, that's that vacant lot, so they're gonna be digging that one up, removing it, or removing the top part of it, filling it in and then capping it, so no more. Water is getting.
Yeah, that was never.
Never done.
Done, yeah.
Um. They're wanting to look into sewer camera. Uh, with as many septics needing dug, it would be a good purchase and save money, not contracting it out every time, which, do you know how much that, that guy's charging for to come out and run a camera?
I think it's like three hundred dollars.
I don't know, cause Ron would, had his own camera that he would use if he had to, so.
Yeah, I don't, so I mean, clearly we'd need to get, get prices on that before we can do anything with that.
Yeah, they need to get some quotes on how much a camera would cost.
Um, they're wanting to rent a Harley rake to bring up old gravel back at lagoons, which basically just kinda rake it around, I guess. For the skid loader. Uh, moving on. The water department, the monthly testing was done, backwash thirty-two thousand gallons this month. Phone lines are shop fixed, allowing alarm system to work. Uh, Eric and Rex stopped, stopped out, Eric's new Alliance contact for wastewater and Rex gave me distribution study guide. Uh, radio read put at Steve's house, everything is radio read now, like Steve Plur?
No, Steve, Stevie's.
Oh, out of.
His actual house, didn't have a radio read.
Uh, hydrant repair, hydrant was broken by Cobalt. Drop drain down hydrant and never got it out, where was that at?
I don't know.
Do you know?
I have no idea.
Uh, ball valve replaced at three oh four Mill Street and meter taken apart and fixed after, afterwards as well. Uh, chemicals delivered, Kenball Midwest presentation and new vendor made for town. Quotes worked up for projects, dig plan for water and sewer jobs. Uh, limbs removed from the, the glue, lagoons. All signs sitting down and water plant were put, put up properly. Um, things needed for projects to do list, the three oh eight US twenty-seven quote. Is, looks like you need the meter pit, needs when. The drive is dug up, materials if we do it ourselves, flowable fill concrete, a hundred dollars float. Thousand dollar float needed for two days, eighty dollars labeled labor. Uh, for two days, two hundred and sixty-four. This is flow fill under to bring within four inches should take one, one and a half hours and concrete next day would take two, two and a half. Rough estimates around thirteen hundred dollars, Gold Star quoted it, uh, at fifteen hundred. And they got a, a warranty with theirs, his walkers recommending that we have, Gold Star go ahead and do it. So they can keep on other things and, uh, yeah, I've got the. The proposal, or I guess you wanna call it the proposal right here for them. On that one, um, four oh six Davis Street, uh, needs a new meter pit. Five bags of sand and a scoop of dirt, be no more than a hundred dollars, rest of the stuff is in the shop. Uh, looking around two hundred for labor time. Um. Needing some top dirt, top soil for most of the septic digs. What is council studs on bringing a load of dirt to use on all projects, possibly a triaxle. I think if we can find some, that would be a wise decision.
No, I agree.
If they can find it, somebody bring us some good top soil.
So I go over, I'm going to get some for what I took to pull out and it's dad's dump trailer, what's it, it's what, five by twelve, five by ten? I think is what it is.
Yeah, but it, I can't remember the yards on that.
Fully loaded down up to it and I think it's like a, for the black dirt, it is like a hundred and sixty a load. Then they have another one just as a regular top dirt, which is a little bit less, I mean, if we wanna get something like that for them to start off, I'd be more than willing to. Go there and haul it back on that, cause I mean, they get a triaxle, how much is that?
Uh, twenty ton, twenty, twenty-five ton probably.
Yeah.
Which I mean, if they got, that means they got listed.
Which I mean, the top soil as far as, I mean, they're not gonna put that much on.
Right.
But I mean.
And I mean, they're not, it's not like they're gonna, wanna put top soil down, as soon as they get that digging either, they're gonna let everything settle, so.
Right.
I mean, that's up to you. Everyone.
Uh, we'd have to see what a triaxle.
Yeah, I think they can do.
Price, then you get quote on that.
Get us a quote on that.
Are you gonna vote on the quote for Leon Lynch's old house?
Oh, alright.
Yeah, we gotta do, we gotta do the.
Fifteen hundred dollars from Gold Star concrete.
Them to go ahead and do it.
I'll make a motion to have Gold Star do that, three oh eight, US twenty-seven.
Second, all favor.
Alright.
Aye.
Then Davis, we don't need to vote on that, they just need to do it.
Yeah.
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 Um, Rob, on the solar updates, you have final numbers Friday, June seventh. Hydrants flushing will start June nineteenth, around every Wednesday till done, no flushing July third for holidays. Um, did we, did we ever decide, like, do like the north end one year and the south end the next?
Well, I think.
Or are they gonna try and do them every year?
I think they're gonna, well, right now they just have to go through, cause I think he's gone through and got everything labeled or numbered or however.
I think they all have to be done once every year, just Ron being by himself, he would do one into town.
Okay, well, I wasn't sure, I couldn't remember how that went, which is fine. Uh, water loss audit, need gallons pulled from hydrants by fire department, also, why isn't valve station being used to fill trucks? Um, lead survey still need responses, valve numbering and exercise, still searching for missing valves that. Builds, that as builds, have will be looking into valve exercise tool as well.
I think they're still trying to locate maybe some of them, cause I think they were talking with Doug, or the Doug or Mike, one of them.
Right, some of them got covered with the asphalt after the storm.
They told him just to keep going and then once they located that you may be at fifteen and all of a sudden you jump up to eighty.
Right.
On that side of it.
And on the filling of the trucks, I mean, really, I, I'm not the one that's saying to where to fill trucks, but. Which we don't really fill that many trucks in town per se.
There was, the numbers, uh, were really high.
I know Westfield a pool last. Last Tuesday night and then again. Friday, Thursday night, Friday night, something like that, so I know he's pulled some, I mean, I think he's pulled twelve or thirteen loads. Off of a hydrant for a pool.
Yeah, that's what, uh, we got phone calls from people wanting to know why he was pulling water out of hydrant on Main Street. But if he's, if he's using that to fill pools, then they're supposed to be built for it, just like I used to build Joey when he used a fire truck.
Yeah, and that's.
And Shannon, when she lived back there, Shannon roads, I, I built them too, they would let me know how much. Water they used from the truck or the hydrant to fill the pool.
But what happened to valve fill station, that would be.
That's why it's there.
Right.
You know, but I mean, as far as if you guys are fighting a fire or whatever, pull from wherever.
Yeah, that's one thing, emergency situations are a whole done, another story.
Yeah, cause I mean, I would imagine Wes was donating this time and as far as on that side of it, but.
Right, I mean, that, like you say, that was hit all him, not me.
Yeah.
I had nothing in that, so. That would be a him question.
So does you guys have as far as on the water loss audit, you guys keep track of what you guys use?
Like if we, if we use on a fire, most generally, yes.
Okay.
But we haven't. We haven't had any fires where we've had to pull from here, the last fire we were at was up in Lynn, pulled out of there.
Yeah, they've all been out in the country, calls that they have.
Right, so luckily, knock on wood, we had nothing, so. Then, like I say, nothing over there, well, I'll take that back, last Saturday we went, had a big extrication training down at Pardo's, we done a school bus. Northeastern donated to fire departments, all the county fire departments busts, one of them they had to get rid of when they got the electric ones. And we had a really extensive training doing that, so God forbid we ever have to cut a school bus apart, so.
You wanna have them look at getting updated quotes on the valve exerciser?
Yeah.
On that side of it, that's how long to them.
Yeah. Here, I'll just make them know. Um, Mr. Green, do you have anything, sir?
No, I think everything's been answered, uh, on a fine street down here between Maine and. Probably not as far as Trent's house, the street, it was stopped right there, was there a reason it wasn't completed? From like Maine back to like Tom Pierce's driveway.
I don't think they went.
The street sidewalks, and so how much would that cost if someone?
I don't, they didn't do any sewer work through there, did?
No sewer work and no sidewalk work, it kinda stopped right in front of us.
Yeah, they only replaced what they tore up.
Yeah.
That was in the grain.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's why it.
If there was fifteen feet still to go, they wouldn't do it.
No, just like over here on Green Street, they done the same thing between.
We had to pay extra for them to fix that sidewalk by the.
They know how much that would have cost to fix that, rest of that sidewalk and street.
I have no idea.
At least get, try to get some ideas, maybe, might be able to throw in.
I don't, and I don't know if that's, that, the rest of that street is in the.
I will actually.
I'm just curious, if we, if it wasn't too expensive, I might be able to get some people, depending on how much it costs, you know, I'm sure it's not gonna be.
Paying's not cheap, so.
No, it's, concrete's not either.
Right. What was it, eight years ago?
Yeah, something like that, I mean.
Seventeen years ago.
The town paid for the concrete and a bunch of us volunteered and.
Yeah, see, we could probably do something like that down there if we had to, it just looked a little better.
Right.
And it's sidewalking especially.
Anything else, sir?
I think that's it for today.
Thanks for keeping up the moment on some people around town.
I was keeping the grass out of the reeds.
That's always, that's always a blessing, uh, can I get a motion to approve claim of payments? What?
No, hey, um, as far as with the curbs and all that stuff, we need to make sure that Kyle stays on streets and. Gets rid of all the grass that's growing in the streets, cause it's catchy on that side of it. Stop them from beating on my door. I'll make a motion to approve claim of payments.
Thank you.
Second ten.
All favor.
Alright.
And motion to adjourn?
Make your motion adjourn.
What?
Did everybody get this email from OBI Settlement State?
Yes.
Do we need to do anything with it, or is it just information?
It's more just information.
What I got was information.
Well, they, see, it goes to my work email and since I haven't been at work, I wasn't able to get to them until today, so I just thought I'd ask.
Information and education, that's what.
I'll set it in my information. Okay, that's all we have.
Information, or, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
That's a cluster.